The time is now seven thirty-six, and I would like to call our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Here.
Trustee Gagani.
Here.
Trustee Humphreys.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton.
Here.
President Graeber.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three, the welcome to our visitors. We want to welcome everyone to our meeting, and we appreciate your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? And I will just make one quick comment. Caitlyn, I meant to email you this before. There's just a small typo that I saw in six.
Yep.
First instead of first, okay.
Yes. I was just going to bring that up, thank you.
Just proves that we read them.
Yes. Okay, does anyone have any other questions regarding, questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes as presented with a small revision from the word frist to first?
Move to be approved as corrected.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes as corrected that has been seconded. Caitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graeber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes as corrected. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
Sure. As you can see from page eight of your packet, the library fund, which is also known as our general or operating fund, is in the negative. That's as expected this time of year. Our tax revenue will begin coming in May, so you should see that be reflected in our next month's financials. And we are thirty-three percent of the way through the year. Oh, as you can see, there is the first pay application for the roofing project for the capital replacement fund. So that is almost three hundred thousand dollars. And that has been, has gone through the vetting process with the construction manager before coming before you to be paid. And they have completed the amount of work required for that pay application. We are now at twenty-eight point five percent spent for the year. None of the lines that are kind of over their proportion have, have really changed. I do want to call your attention to, we have a new vendor that we've been using more and more, and that is Ingram Library Services. You'll see them on the invoice, invoices of note list and in the regular invoice list. They are actually a book vendor. We have started using them more and Baker &amp; Taylor less due to some issues with Baker &amp; Taylor not being timely in delivering some items. So if you have any other questions, let me know.
What is the, is there a difference in the cost between Baker &amp; Taylor and Ingram Library Services?
No, they have the same, the same general discount, and the processing fees are similar. There really isn't a whole lot of difference between the two. They, they have different interfaces and provide different like selection tools for the selectors, so we will be using both.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions or comments to the financial matters as presented? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
I'll move to approve the financial matters as presented.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yeah.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yeah.
President Graeber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comment on agenda items?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. We're now on to agenda item number seven, public comment on other library business. Do we have any public comment on other library business?
Not today.
All right, thanks Jen. And just because this does relate to public comment. Julie, do you want to summarize the small change to kind of how board-related comments will be presented in today and in the, in the future?
Yes. For the written comments to be submitted, as you know, during the pandemic, as we went to remote participation, we began including that piece on the agenda that we would read those out during the meeting. Due to the nature of some of the comments that we have received, we have chosen to change that procedure. If someone provides a written comment, it will be forwarded to the Library Board of Trustees and, and then included in the next month's packet. That way, it is on the public record. You've all seen it. The public's had a chance to see it, but we also do not make someone read that aloud into the record.
Okay, thank you. We're now on to agenda item number eight, A, new business, the Summer Reading Club presentation. Julie, or who, who's, is this Allison is going to take the lead on this one?
Yep, it's me. Hi, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Allison.
Glad to be here. Hope everybody's having a good end of May so far. We just started the summer reading program this past Sunday on May twenty-third. It goes until August first. It's pretty similar to how we've done it in years past. We have four programs for four different age groups. We have the Read to Me Program for our birth through age five, generally children who are not yet in formal school. Then we have our Readers Program for grade kindergarten through eighth grade. The Teen Program, which overlaps and starts at seventh grade, seventh through twelfth grade, we, the middle schoolers kind of get to choose where they feel they fall. Usually they decide which prizes they want most, you know, that type of thing. And then, of course, we have our adult program as well. Our theme this year is Reading Colors Your World, so it's a very colorful theme. Very, we were very excited about it. If you have not been in the library recently, I very much encourage you to come by and check out our decorations in the kids' room, and actually Adult and Teen Services has some cute stuff going on over their desk as well. Of course, you know, my staff have done some really cool stuff, so definitely check it out. I'll give you a brief overview of just how it works. Before I get into that, I did want to say we are still using Read Squared, which is our online tracking software that we started last year. We had decent interest last year during the program, particularly because we were closed for part of the summer. So far, it seems to be tracking that we're going to continue to have some pretty good use of that program, particularly among the adults and some families like it because it's a great way to put all your family's reading programs all together. We do still offer paper packets though, because we do have a, you know, significant amount of patrons who enjoy tracking. Without the technology, we get lots of parents who like that. It's a screen-free option as well. So they can go either way. For the youngest program, it's, for actually all four programs, it's three, the all two, pardon me. For both of the children's programs, it's three levels. For the littlest kids, it is ten books per level. They get a prize after each level, and then they can keep reading to earn raffle tickets or other small prizes. The Readers Program, same thing, three levels, which is either six books or six hours of reading, depending on which way they read. Teen Program is going to be same thing, six hours or three books. And then the adult program is the one that's had a change this year. This year it is eighteen hours or three books, based on feedback they got from adults previous years. Karen's been just sort of like adjusting the numbers to kind of fit what most people are doing. As I mentioned, little kids have three, three levels they can do for three different prizes. Teens also have three levels for three different prizes. The adults get, their first level will get them a prize and a raffle entry, and then all additional entries will continue getting them raffle tickets. We have, we, this year, because school was in session, we were able to drop off our packets with signup information to all of the District Fifty-Eight schools, as well as Saint Mary's, Saint Joe's, and Downers Grove Christian, which is great. So we were actually get the packets in hand to kids, as well as information about how to sign up for Read Squared. And we also are partnering with District Fifty-Eight's Math Club again, and we'll be handing out their prizes throughout the summer. I don't have full details on that. I'm still working that out with them. But because we, that we normally provide them physical space to do prize pickup, while we were planning all this, we did not know, we, you know, still are not quite sure how physical space is going, especially with kids. So we are going to be handing all that out for them again as well. And then I'm not, I think, I'm sure if it's mentioned in a previous A, Board Packet or whatever, the PR department is also working with the Downtown Business Association for a scavenger hunt around Downers Grove where we're, similar to sort of how downtown management has done other scavenger hunts, like the Gingerbread Fest, that type of stuff, where if customers visit the stores, they can enter a raffle here at the library to win a prize that way too. So just different ways to get people out in the community and excited about it.
That's cool.
My generals feel if anybody has any questions.
Who are some of the, or what, what are some of the businesses involved in, in helping with the prizes?
That is a very good question, and I don't have it in front of me, so let me pull that up real quick.
There are twenty-four.
On our website, it's S R C. I believe there are, I want to say twenty-five different businesses. I might be quite, I might not be quite on that, but they're all listed there, but all of our major ones, all of our neighbors are pretty much involved. I don't want to read them all out because I don't want to miss anybody. But I, they all are listed on there, including some of our prize sponsors, like every day, a Sun, Every Day is a Sunday who sponsors one of the children's prizes. And some of our other prize sponsors who sponsor some of our raffles are on there as well. And those raffles, that raffle goes all the way through August first, and they'll, the winners of that raffle will get gift cards for downtown dollars, a fifty-dollar gift card that can be spent anywhere of those participating businesses, which is really fun.
Excellent. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Allison on, on the program?
No questions, just a big thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
And, and thank you for getting the businesses involved. That is, that is outstanding.
That is all our PR department. Cindy and Grace, I know, have been working really hard on that, and they've made some very cute scavenger hunt crayons in all the windows, so. We're very, we have a very good partner in the Downtown Management Association. We work with them in the kids' room too. Glad to be able to do more.
All right, thank you. We're now on to agenda item eight B, Girl Scout Troop Gardening Project Presentation. I think we might have a change of plans here, Julie, or?
Yep, they, they missed their deadline. They did not get their presentation together and are hoping to have that for us for the June, for the June meeting.
Okay, thank you. We're now on to agenda item eight C, the Non-Resident Fee Card Participation. I think for anyone who's been involved in this before, which I think is all of us, this, this should be familiar, but Julie, would you just kind of walk us through this, please?
Yes, the Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program is an opt-in for every library in the state, and you have to do it annually. And you decide whether you're going to participate, if so, what method you use to compute your fee, the amount of the fee or that computation, and then what your effective starting date is. Generally, we have had a starting date of August first. It gives us a few months to let people know if there is a change. And this is for non-residents who are purchasing a card. That is anyone who lives in an unincorporated area in one of the Downers Grove School districts. That is generally how they determine which library you have to go to to get a non-resident card. This year, we may see fewer non-resident cards due to the changes in the law. There is now a provision that libraries can, that libraries give free library cards to any children, students residing in unincorporated, in unserved areas that qualify for free and reduced lunch. So we were working with our schools to get that information out to the kids who qualified. So if they were in that area and, and qualified for free and reduced lunch, they knew they could come and get a card. And also, there is a provision for veterans who are low income as well to get free cards. So use, we usually use, or in past years have used, the general mathematical formula, and the computation is listed in your Board Packet. This year's computation is no change. That's two hundred and eighty-two dollars per year, and that is for how, the household. So if, you know, if you have a household of four, that will get you library cards for all four of the folks residing in your household. So that is our recommendation is to participate using the general mathematical formula for a fee of two eighty-two and starting on August first, although since it's not a change, that really just makes it effective through next year.
How many people, Julie, I know from year to year this changes, but is there a general idea of how many people have bought these in the past?
It's actually in your packet back in the circulation statistics. We have the non-resident cards, I believe, are listed separately. I have to be in the right spot. It is listed on page sixty-two under registrations, the new fee cards, that is how many that we have done, fee cards are the non-resident fee cards.
Okay.
So as you can see, in twenty twenty, we did ninety of them total.
Okay.
It's, it's never, it's not a huge number.
Right. Okay, and that's nice with the change. I didn't realize that, the change where the students can get the cards for free, because I, my understanding on this is that we essentially have no discretion. It's, the discretion is between the two, you know, payment amounts, and that's it, so.
Yes, and that was a change to the non-resident program law. They called it the Cards for Kids Act.
Okay. Very good. All right, any questions for Julie on the non-resident fee card participation and otherwise, if there are any questions, do we have a motion to approve the non-resident fee card participation item as presented?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the non-res, non-resident fee card participation set forth at agenda item eight C that has been seconded. Caitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yeah.
President Graeber.
Yes, thank you very much, Caitlyn. We have approved agenda item eight C, the Non-Resident Fee Card Participation as presented. We're now on to agenda item eight D, the TIF District Expiration and Potential Budget Impact Agenda Item. Julie, could you fill us in on these details, please?
So this, this is something that doesn't happen very often. As a matter of fact, it's something that, that we've, I have never done in, in my career is to have a tax increment finance district actually expire. So as you probably know, and I listed in my, in the packet, tax increment finance districts are created to bolster economic development in a specific area. They last for twenty-three years is the default length of time for a TIF district that the EAV, the Equalized Assessed Valuation of Property in the area, is frozen in the first year of the TIF. And then the increment, the difference between that value and the current value is then used to reinvest in the area. So generally, what happens is the village, because it's the village that's in charge of it, will like sell bonds to be able to do like facade grants or a streetscape or remediate a, a particularly distressed property. I believe in the Ogden TIF, there was a former gas station site that was a real problem and was bringing down the properties around it, and so they were able to, to do that. And it, so as the value of the property grows, then they use that money to then pay back that investment. And in the twenty-third year, it expires. And the taxing bodies that have only been receiving that frozen value all in one year, the full value of the property in that TIF district comes back on to the equalized assessed valuation for the library or for all of the taxing districts all at once. As I did include in your packet on on page twenty-six, that has the twenty-twenty values of the property in the downtown TIF district. It also shows the, what each of those taxing bodies would have received in twenty-twenty had that value been received by that taxing body. So as you can see, it would be about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the library in twenty-twenty. So we have not yet received the value of the property for the twenty-twenty-one tax year. But using this, it, that is a two-point-five percent growth in our EAV. And why that matters is, as you probably remember, when we do our budget, we budget very conservatively, and we usually use a zero or one percent EAV growth in our estimates for the impact of the levy. So this shows, so this guarantees that we're going to get at least double what we normally, what we normally estimate in our budget process. So you all have the copy of the twenty-nineteen presentation to the board that I did on the whole property tax process. That's page twenty-eight through forty-two in your packets. And that is, most of that comes from Illinois Department of Revenue Publications. So if you have any questions about the process, please do let me know. Most of the process, and the process is big, it encompasses townships and counties and the state, and everybody kind of gets their, their fingers in. But your role in the process as the Board of Library Trustees is to set the library's tax levy. Everything else is someone else's to do. And that levy is one number within the revenue side of our budget that then goes to the village of Downers Grove and gets put into their tax levy. They do all of the ordinances, they do all of the hearings. So yours is to really pass that one number. But it's a big number to us because it is about ninety-five percent of our annual budget is our property tax levy. And as you know, a large number of the documents that you get with each draft of our budget is all about how the tax, what that tax levy is going to do and how it would impact individual taxpayers, what it does to our tax rate using all of our best estimates. So as, as you can see from that presentation also, as the levy increases, so does the tax rate, as long as the EAV stays the same. If the EAV increases, the tax rate goes down. So there is that kind of inverse proportion between the two. And you can see that the, I believe it's page twenty-seven, has the the history of our EAV and tax rate. As you can see there, our, the tax rate for the library has not increased since twenty fifteen. And as you can also see, our levy, while we increased it, say, twen, using twenty-nineteen as the sample year, where the library passed a levy for that year that was over four percent increase. If you look up at the tax rate, the impact to the individual taxpayer was actually a decrease of one-point-six percent because the EAV increased at a rate of three-point-five percent. So you can kind of get a sense of what happens as the value of the property in the library's service area increases, it really offsets the impact to the individual taxpayer. And if you look at this library tax rate per hundred thousand dollars of home value, you can see that our actual, the tax being paid by the individual homeowner has actually decreased over the last five years. So last year, we, as you know, we held the tax levy flat, did the zero percent increase. We had a three-point-six percent increase in our, in our value in the property. And so the tax rate did again decline. So taxpayers are still paying less, and actually, our current tax rate is lower than it was in twenty thirteen. So we have, this board has been very conservative in the way of budgets, and I just wanted to make sure that you under, understand that this is an opportunity and something that we can figure in to our revenue estimates because we know that this is a significant portion of evaluation that is coming back on to the library's tax rolls. So for next year, we're doing some things internally. We are re-examining our facilities staffing model to better address safety and security during all hours of operations. So that will be a change that can potentially impact the, the salaries budgets. And we are also going to be postponing the full implementation of merit increases once more. Because this year was so crazy, a lot of our staff, the performance evaluation criteria for their individual jobs, they may not have been doing that this year. For example, one of Allison's staff members is in charge of children's outreach, and her job is primarily to get into the schools and do outreach events. She, she hasn't been doing that for more than a year. So while she has made some really great, done some really great projects and made great strides for us, what's on her actual performance evaluation isn't necessarily what she's been doing. So our proposal for this year- So our proposal for this year will be a an across the board benchmark increase to the salary schedule, which is according to our new salary structure, the way we do that. And then a a small merit increase for all staff. I'm looking at a three percent across the board is probably what I'll be proposing. So I wanted to let you just kind of give you all the heads up. Because you know, seventy percent of our budget is personnel. And so anything that we do for personnel, any raise, any changes, like a reorganization, like reworking our security staff, that those are the biggest budget impacts. And there is very little that that impacts this budget the way that personnel does. So I just wanted to give you all heads up. Give you some information about TIF districts and and this one expiring, which is amazing to me. And I just think it's a testament to the village's stewardship of the tax increment financing district to see how well our downtown is doing and the success of that TIF over its twenty three year life, which we will be benefiting from as it comes back on to the tax rolls. So if you have any questions for me, I I know this is all like it's a lot of, it's a lot of numbers. It's a lot to take in.
I I just had a couple of just quick comments. And one is the you know, the the way I guess I look at the the sixty eight million dollar increase in the EAV is that you have this you know, additional, you know, you're spreading the costs over a larger pool of payers. And so you can reduce the cost per household. But at the same time, you know, the reason why that number is that number is because of all the new development downtown. And so there's, which demands more from the library. And so I think as a board, we need to make sure that we are responsive to that rather than just saying, oh, look, this is great. We can reduce. And and you know that I I mean, I like keeping the tax rates as low as possible, but at the same time, recognizing that a lot more people living in this area, there's a lot more people visiting downtown than there were twenty three years ago, or even five years ago. And so you know, I I I appreciate all of Julie, your your points about wanting to kind of reevaluate, using this as an opportunity to kind of reevaluate, you know, the library's, you know, approach going forward. One thing I I did miss, what was the first item that you mentioned? I think it related to security. When you were saying, we're going to reevaluate, and you listed three or four different items, but I think the first one might have been something relating to the security staff.
Yes, we're we're going to be looking at our facility staff and we've had the security monitor position. We did have retirement over the COVID times. And with fewer folks, we had not filled that position. We'd we'd gone a little bit different direction. And so now we're we're really looking at how we distribute those duties and library of safety and security and being able to look at possibly having someone from that department available at all times the library is open. That has not been ever been the case, as far as I know. Over especially during the day and over weekends, we have had gaps in our security coverage.
Well, and I know from my perspective, I and I think that that the library staff is trained on these issues, but to the extent that we can minimize those interactions, you know, between staff and, you know, dealing with security issues versus having a security person dealing with those security issues, I would be very much in favor of that.
Yes, and it's very difficult for our public service staff in particular, who one minute are having to, you know, maybe having to ask someone to leave due to, say, a mask violation. And then the next day, that person comes in looking for help and that same person is on the desk. So that that has really been where we found that the current practice and our customer service promise are are not but they're at cross purposes. So we are reevaluating. One of the things that our building operations manager is doing right now is reviewing with some other libraries what their process and and training and what kind of structure they have and getting some ideas on what to propose for us.
Okay, any additional questions or comments regarding the TIF district expiration and potential budget impact agenda item?
I just want to thank you, Jonathan, because everything that was in my head you just said. The about the about the TIF. The reason the TIF is being allowed to expire is it did its job. And downtown is revitalized. It is rebuilt. It is thriving. It's not perfect, but it's 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 thriving. It's growing. It's adding to the tax rolls. It is stimulating business, generating more revenue for the village in the way of sales tax and food and beverage tax and so forth. We don't see that as a library, but the community as a whole sees it. But it also raises the demand for our services. And we need to remind ourselves of that and occasionally remind our community of that.
And it's important to note that because it all comes back on one year, you get, this is the window, you get one chance to have it not impact all the other taxpayers. To keep that ta- tax rate this kind of the same, or at least attempt to.
Right. And this was, I was going to ask this earlier, but basically what happens is is that the TIF expires in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, the taxes kind of adjust, the EAVs adjust, and then we see those dollars essentially in twenty twenty two. So it would line up with our next budget essentially.
Yes, which is the the one that we'll be doing.
Yeah.
And, yep.
And I and I like that. I like that this was on the agenda because it's kind of gets us to start thinking about these sorts of issues as well and reminding everyone what the, you know, kind of where we stand and what we've done previously.
Exactly. And that's why I wanted to make sure that that we had a chance to talk about it before we were getting into all of the the nitty gritty of of the budget and the bigger budget drafts so that, you know, we we could really talk about just this part. Because it is such a unique situation.
Right. All right. Thank you. Any other comments regarding agenda item eight D? Okay, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number nine, unfinished business. COVID nineteen response and phased reopening plan. Julie, do you want to just let us know kind of where things stand is with respect to the plan? You are muted.
May has been a crazy month. Let me tell you. May we, just when you think that things are are kind of settling, they just, the CDC comes out with all new guidelines and everything changes and you suddenly go, wait, what? So.
With no warning.
Yeah, exactly. With no warning. So as you can see, this is our first major revision to the COVID response and phased reopening plan. We had made some small revisions from the time that this was originally written, but this is the first major one. And the big thing that happened is we took the library's COVID phase five, which we had thought would be large group limits only and is not. Basically, we looked at that and went, well, we're either not going to do that at all, but here's all this other stuff that's happening. So we revised our phase five and made it our bridge to the new normal, which, you know, taking a little bit from the Illinois Restore Illinois Plan, we're bridging. Our thought is that until kids can be vaccinated, we need to continue to put the health and safety of our youngest customers at the forefront. So what we're proposing here, and you know, you're the board, you can make changes. Tell tell me if you if you don't like it, if you want to change it, whatever. But our new bridge to the new normal would include requiring masking for anyone entering the kids' room area. Basically, we would, you know, make a little barrier and anybody entering, be it patrons or staff, anyone going into the public kids' room area would be required to use a mask and that we would also not return play area or toys until kids can be vaccinated. So that is the big change to the plan. And then we would enter our phase six new normal when vaccines were available for kids over the age of two. So that's kind of what we're anticipating. We, there's been a lot of of talk among our management team about how this is going to happen, when it might happen. The we're we're doing the best we can and we're really taking it two weeks at a time because that's really what our management team meets about every other week. And every other week, we seem to be making yet another change. So this, this is just the next one. As you can see, on May third, we did bring our study rooms back. We've started open seating. We are in the last couple of weeks, we have, since the CDC made their changes, we have not been enforcing the zero tolerance on the masks. We've gotten a little less strict about it, but we are still requiring masks of everybody who comes in the library. We are using it on our system on the two hour visit limit. So, you know, occasionally we'll have someone who will have a PC session and a study room session because we are cross checking those and they're ninety minutes each. But by and large, people are not staying for long periods of time. We've been adding seating back slowly but surely. We haven't had a lot of demand for the study rooms yet. We do anticipate that that will happen. So newspapers are back and we have also very recently stopped counting capacity. We do still have our door monitors at each door and they are looking for reminding people to wear masks. But we've stopped counting capacity because we have not come close to that number yet. So our next phase, so we also did, thank you Caitlin, a survey of staff on who is vaccinated. It was an anonymous survey asking if they were fully vaccinated. If not, did they have a date by which they would be fully vaccinated? And also asking if they were planning not to be vaccinated at all. And what we discovered is that extrapolating from the responses that we got, we will be approximately ninety two percent of the staff vaccinated by June eleventh.
Whoa.
Yeah. So we're very hopeful that we can start when Illinois goes to its Restore Illinois Phase Five. And that has been, according to all of their things, says no capacity limits, which basically says no social distancing because capacity limits aren't a thing anymore. We've already seen the mask go by the wayside. So this is where we really start to phase into normal again in the library. And so our management team will be meeting on Wednesday to talk more about this. We're hoping to hear maybe a little more from the state about details of phase five, but we're basically going with as of about June eleventh, the state of Illinois is going to be fully reopened. So we will we will be bringing back tables and chairs. We will be reclaiming, we're already working on reclaiming the meeting room. Because we do anticipate that at some point, Open Meetings Act will no longer allow us to meet remotely. We will have to have a physical forum in the building. So we have to have our meeting room back in order to do that. And just moving back to normal. We did we had announced to staff already that for our hours, we were going to the eight PM open or open till eight PM on June first. And then as of July fifth, we would be back to our full and regular hours. We decided not to change that because we had already given the staff that information. So we are going to continue with that plan to get the hours back. We just may be moving forward with some of the physical stuff a little sooner. And in general, we are hoping that by that July fifth date, we will be pretty much back to where we were before COVID, except for the masking and no toys and except for the kids' area. We will hold off on in-person programming until September first at the earliest. Part of this is due to our planning cycle. Actually, it's primarily due to our planning cycle. As you know, all of this stuff about summer reading has come out already. Our July August issue of our newsletter is currently going to the pu- the printer. So we we need that little bit extra time. So now staff can start planning programming for September first and forward. We have heard, we will start with small in-person programming. And then moving to the larger programs, we probably won't do any of that till November-ish and most, and for the kids particularly, it won't happen until the vaccines are why are available for children. So that's our general plan right now. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions about all of that craziness?
Rusty Humphries.
I think it all sounds very reasonable and very sensible, if slightly conservative, but I think that's okay. The question I have, and quite frankly, I haven't been following this closely and researching it, when do we expect children to be vaccinated? When when is the vaccine going to be approved for?
We're hoping the the general consensus has kind of been November-ish. That's what what we
That's what I I I've been hearing that a conservative estimate is by the end, essentially the end of twenty twenty one, like so whether that's the fourth quarter at some point or November, December, but that's kind of the the timeframe I've been consistently hearing as well.
Well, then, let me go back and maybe indicate that I wasn't listening real closely. When we are currently going to continue to require masks in the kids' area. We expect that to continue sounds to me like maybe for the rest of the year.
Yeah, possibly, possibly through the end of twenty twenty one.
Yeah, and that's for the safety of the children.
Yeah. And I will say that we have gotten patron feedback on both sides of this coin. We've gotten pushback on wearing masks. We've also had people indicate to us that if people can be unmasked in the library, they won't be bringing their children in. So we're we're getting both sides of that. And and I will say that So we're, we're getting both sides of that. And, and I will say that there is, this community has people who feel very strongly on both sides of this issue.
Well, I think we need to err on the side of caution and safety. And I think you've, you think your proposal is doing that. There will, if a parent has children, they can, once they can get through the lobby, at least into the children's area, they'll be safe. And I, we don't have a separate entrance for the children's area. And so we can't really fix that issue. But I think, I think, I like your plan.
And especially with the children's department on the first floor, you can generally, you know, move your kids in their masks fairly quickly through the lobby area into, into the kids' room.
Yeah. And I would hope we would have a flyer or something that would explain that to somebody who does say, I don't think it's going to be safe for my children there. Well, we can't guarantee anything, but we're doing our best.
Yes. And one of the, the positives of the layout of our children's department is we do have the self-check units available there in the kids' room itself so that anyone who does not want to linger in the lobby won't, won't have to. They can do all of their business in the kids' room. We may have to make some provisions for getting them some help from circulation in, in that area as well. But we figure we can, we can jump that hurdle when we get there.
Thank you.
All right. And I think the best thing about the plan is the fact that you can make adjustments along the way with, you know, management as things, things could get worse, things could get better, the state may change, that, you know, the different, different things may occur between now and our next meeting. And I think the, that's what's good about Agenda Item 9A, which is, you know, giving you the authority to make those changes. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the COVID-19 response and phase reopening plan as presented?
I actually just had a couple of questions. And I don't think, and I'll echo what Dave said. Yeah, while it's conservative, I mean, I think it's the only kind of reasonable path to, to getting kind of both, accommodating something from both sides. So, and so I think the plan as it is, I think is good. A couple of like related questions, maybe. One is, so kids under 12 in other areas of the library, we're just, I mean, is, is the policy just done, well, if they're there and their parents are fine with them being there, that's okay? Will there be like an unaccompanied child's policy? I mean, there already is, right? But like, that younger age, is there any kind of concern around that?
At this point, we are, we have not gotten through all of, of the details of that, but I would, at this point, think that any unaccompanied kids would be, you know, it's up to the parents to monitor the kid's behavior and to make sure if they are saying that their kids have to have a mask, then it's up to them to make sure their kid's wearing mask, not in the kids' room.
Right. Okay. And my second question is less maybe to do with the specific plan, but I'm curious because I know a lot of organizations that, you know, made some big changes to their programming over COVID are retaining some of those changes to their programming. So keeping, you know, certain online only programs because they happen to bring in more people than they ever would have otherwise and, and reaching a new audience potentially and, and even doing different types of programming that they wouldn't necessarily be able to do in person. So I'm just curious. I know this is, goes beyond the policy itself and maybe a topic for, you know, further on for like annual planning, but I'm curious to know about what, you know, is it just going to be like, oh, everything, you know, September 1, all back to in-person or is there going to be a?
Oh, oh, no. This, this will be, this will be a long transition. There are some programs that, you know, are better served in person. There are also some that work really well online. I will tell you that the consortium of libraries that are doing these big name author events that are really inexpensive to do online, that's not going to go away. Those kinds of things you're going to see sticking with us. And our, some of the book discussion groups have really enjoyed being online. People find it more convenient. So we will likely have different options for different folks. So yes, I think that this, the pandemic is going to have far-reaching permanent effects on our programming and the way that we deliver programming and the way we think about delivering it. There are also some things that we're hoping for as well with, say, doing some outdoor programming and partnering with the Park District and, and things like that, that we would also like to retain moving forward. And we're, we're very hopeful.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. I look forward to hearing more about that. That's, sounds exciting.
Sounds good. Thank you, Krista. Yes, Trustee Humphries.
I'm sorry. I just want to, again, I, I feel like I'm echoing, but the, the concept of, I mean, we do things very well in-house and most of our programs are better in-house. But even those programs maybe have a, an option and let the, let the customer decide if they feel that they can get enough out of it remotely. I do think it's about, there's value in still requiring registration. So we know how many people we are serving that way. So we can keep making the proper adjustments. And also on our long-term reporting, statistic counting, I mean, date count is much less meaningful today. We still need it, but it's not as meaningful. We needed to have another number to add to that, for example. So anyway, enough said.
To the parents who felt that they might not be able to bring their children in the library, you can also note the outdoor programming where they would not have to come in at all, right?
Exactly. And we are planning to continue our curbside service until our pickup lockers are deployed, which we hope will be end of June.
Okay. Any?
No, I was going to move to to approve the plan for restoring and reopening as presented.
Okay. We have a motion to approve Agenda Item 9A, the COVID-19 Response and Phase Reopening Plan as Presented. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes. Thank you very much. We have approved Agenda Item 9A. We're now on to Agenda Item Number 10, the Library Director's Report. Julie?
Yes. So it's been a heck of a month. We've had so much going on. The roof replacement project has been a headache. We have had no end of issues with weather, with changes to the timeline, with subcontractors showing up and getting started on areas that weren't supposed to be done yet, closing entrances without notice. So we are really looking forward to getting this project done. Fingers crossed, the actual roofing portion should be done by tomorrow. Then we have some lingering sheet metal work and the exterior painting that will still have to happen. So there will be a, still a couple, another week or two of little bits and pieces, but we are very hopeful that the worst of this project is behind us and we're just grateful that it's almost over. I just want to remind you all that on Tuesday, June 1st, we have our first EDI training with Rashida Graham Washington. And that is from 6:00 to 9:00 on Tuesday evening. Caitlin will be sending out the agenda for that in the next day or so, and that will be posted as well. So that will be also an online meeting. There will be no, no board action taken at the meeting, but I did miss, misspeak in my written report. There will be a public comment section because, per our bylaws for this organization, there is public comment at every open, every meeting of this board. So there will be a public comment section in that agenda, but there will be no action taken. And I also want to highlight our, the partnership that Public Relations Manager Cindy Catry and our Adult and Teen Services Librarian, librarian Van McGary, who've been working on our land acknowledgement, have, are creating with the Midwest Soaring Foundation. Midwest Soaring is, it is Midwest Save Our Ancestors Remains and Resources Indigenous Network Group. It is a foundation that is based in Lockport, Illinois. It's a 501(c)(3) and it, their mission is to work toward repatriation, protect sacred sites, educate the public, and promote community building among all people regarding indigenous life ways. We have some really great ideas on how to partner with them. And Joseph Standing Bear, who is their executive director, has been a wonderful resource. And so we're looking forward to working with him and that organization. And we, one of the first visible things that will happen is it sounds like we will be displaying some of their photos and items in the galleries in October. And I think that was everything that I had.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments for Julie on her director's report? Trustee Humphries?
The comment you just made about the requirement for public comment during the June 1st meeting, I don't say that that is wrong, but is there any way to avoid having that disrupt or take, take too much time away from the intended purpose of that evening? In other words, there is a way to limit it in some fashion or?
Each public comment can only last five minutes. And if I remember rightly, it can only take a total of, I believe it's 30 minutes. I could be wrong on that.
Okay. Well, that's the worst case then, 30 minutes. I'm a strong believer in public comment, but I'm also a strong believer in this particular kind of board retreat that you're studying the EDI program. So.
Exactly. And that may just be something that next time we review the bylaws, we may want to revise so that particularly at committee of the whole or training meetings, that there is an option for no public comment at committee meetings where no action will be taken or something to that effect.
We currently have scheduled that meeting as a three-hour session from 6:00 to 9:00. In a worst-case situation, if we needed to have 30 minutes of public comment. I, I know everybody has busy schedules, but I would suggest that we might consider extending the meeting a little bit if necessary to complete Rashida's plan.
And as any board meeting, the start time is fixed, the end time is flexible.
Yeah, this is just kind of a worst-case warning, if you would, to use a worst-case word, that if we had an extended public comment period, we might run past nine o'clock.
It'd happen.
Okay.
So eat dinner beforehand is what Dave just said.
All right. Any additional questions or comments on Julie's report? Okay. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item 11, Trustee Comments and Requests for Information. We have any trustee comments or requests for information? Trustee Doherty?
Yeah, I had two quick question, well, one question, maybe a comment. So I was curious, we had social work interns in the library starting was last year. Is that a program that will be continued this year? And when might we expect to hear a little bit more about it?
We currently have two social work interns. A lot of their work has kind of changed during COVID because we are not seeing the volume of folks in the library with social services needs. They do have office, office hours where they are out on the public floor and available. They have intake forms. They have a full like referral information for programs all over our area. They also help maintain the cupboard, our little free pantry. I'm trying to think of what else they do.
Are there terms? I mean, like, is it a year? Is it, I just don't remember when they started, I guess.
It depends on the individual. They're actually doing this as an intern, as an internship that is part of their degree requirements. So it depends on what degree they're going for. We have bachelor's, master's, and PhD students at Aurora University for this. And we've had different levels. So like at the master's level, it lasts longer. And their semesters aren't necessarily traditional semesters. They extend a bit. So each and every social work intern that we accept goes through an application process and it includes what the timeframe for their, for their particular internship and what they're out, and approximate hours and that sort of thing.
So it's not necessarily like a cohort that comes in and they're here and then they all kind of leave at the same time. We have a new batch. They, they're kind of staggered and overlapping.
Yes, they are kind of staggered. Octavia Nylund has been with us for, oh gosh, I think it's been over a year now. But the second one has turned over once.
Great. No, thank you. I just, we haven't heard about them for a while. And I know that was a, it's a great program. I just wanted to hear a little bit more. And then my, my comment or maybe question, I don't know, you know, with the outdoor programming for, especially for children's programming over the summer and, you know, to your point earlier about some parents maybe not wanting, feeling as comfortable being inside the building. Have you thought about putting, like, like there's the, the book card at the train station for, for adults as they're going to and from, you know, commuting? Is there, would we have a mobile children's book checkout station? I mean, if, if, again, if that makes, it might, you know, promote circulation, but also, you know, make some parents feel more comfortable about continuing to check out books?
Not at this point. We have, for those who aren't comfortable coming in, we have continued to encourage use of curbside service. And of course, there is always readers advisory available should, you know, they need a little virtual browsing, as well as the fact that our new, the catalog that we have in beta, the Aspen Discovery Catalog, actually has a lot better carousels and things for different age groups. So it's a little bit easier to browse your catalog in that way.
Great. Thank you.
Any additional trustee? Any additional trustee comments or in requests for information? Trustee Humphries.
We're catching up here. I'm looking at my notes real quickly. Oh. A heads up, and I talked to Julie about this. I just wanted to mention it in the, in, to the board that and here is a situation where I wear multiple hats in the community. But if the First Congregational United Church of Christ, our neighbor across the street, and I, I had another hat I wear, was contacted by the, indirectly through the DuPage County Health Department, from, by the Illinois Department of Public Health, to tell us that they have a vaccine van available. And that we may have the opportunity to have the van for one or more days to give walk-up vaccinations of the J&amp;J vaccine for anybody over 18. We have requested, and then we at the, the Congregational Church decided to, you know, ask the library and the Community Kitchen to partner in that. Not that it's gonna be any work, but just to help promote it. That may very likely happen on June the 8th, Tuesday, June the 8th. We are told. It isn't officially confirmed, but it might happen on that Tuesday. And it'll simply be the, the van will be parked somewhere convenient to all these groups. And all three groups can promote it. They will have up to 200 doses on the van. Another thing that's coming up is June is traditional Pride Month in many areas. And for the first time, Donner's Grove is going to have a much more active, visible Pride Month. And several, a number of organizations and businesses and so forth in the community are working on this. And I'm proud to say that the Donners Grove Public Library is one of them. And Julie is holding up a button. I'm, I have that button on as well. Many, a number of restaurants, a number of restaurants in the community are going to be selling Pride Dinner picnic bags or something like that. I can't remember what they're officially called. But they will contain food, but they will also contain some literature and items celebrating Pride Month and providing information about Pride Month and LGBTQIA activities. And that button will be in the bag along with a bookmark containing information. So I'm proud that the, the library is participating in that. One other thing, put on my First Congregational hat real briefly to say that the First Congregational Church had a consultant in town asking community leaders how the Congregational Church can be of service to them and how they can help the Congregational Church or the United Church of Christ help in its long-term planning and how to serve the community, especially since they, we now have some new buildings next door. And Julie very graciously gave us an hour to, to meet with that consultant. And it was very, very helpful. The consultant has been talking about it ever since. So thank you for that to Julie. And finally, I mentioned the CK, the Community Kitchen, which for the last many months has been serving our, our housing and food insecure neighbors. And we have an informal relationship with the library on that one because we have a library staff member who has been very active on the volunteer staff of the Community Kitchen. And that partnership has been very, very helpful. And I just want to acknowledge that. Sorry to be so wordy, but that's what I have tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Humphries. Any additional trustee comments or requests for information? Okay, we're on to Agenda Item Number 12, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.